And we will start with roll call.
Recording in progress.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
President.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith and Mayor Williamson.
Here. Okay, then we will do announce, Clementine will do an announcement on how folks can participate in person or via Zoom.
Yes, thank you. So for the safe attendance of our public meetings, masks are required for all who attend in person regardless of vaccination status, except those who are younger than two or have a medical condition that prevents wearing a mask. Please keep your phones and devices in the council chamber muted to prevent audio interference with our meeting. And there are two ways to virtually participate in today's meeting. You may join us using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at isearchmonterrey.org. An up-to-date version of the Zoom software must be used. To call in by telephone, dial toll-free 833-568-8864, then enter meeting ID 1613944440, pound, and if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using and updating Zoom are available at monterrey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit that's established for today's meeting, and a countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterrey with about 10 seconds delay, and on Comcast Channel 25 with about 90 seconds delay. As always, we look forward to receiving your public comments.
Beautiful. Thanks Clementine. Alright, next we'll do Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, to the people, to the land, and to liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and so just a note, we usually have general public comments here, but because this is a study session, we do not have public comments on non-agendized topics for this special meeting. And with that, we will go head right into our item for today, which is a public appearance item, which is the 2023 City Staff Work Program. And so before I pass it off to Hans, I just wanted to share that the goal for the council today is for each of us to be able to share what priorities we have and what we see over the next year, and I would maybe even focus more on the next six months, depending on how this conversation goes. My hope is that one of the things is we do check-ins regularly with the council to see where we're at with how staff is working through different things that we task them with and maybe things that come up. So I just want the council to have their their brains primed around the dialogue in sharing your feedback and input and how we can direct staff in their priorities over the next several months. So with that, I'll pass it to you, Hans.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great honor and pleasure to present to you what we are actually working on over the past 12 months. The council put together a new vision, a new mission, and also amended and added additional value drivers not too long ago, almost a year ago, though. And we have since then provided you with an update in August of last year, and this is again our, I think, third update about the existing new mission, vision, and value drivers and the associated work programs. You see that there are literally dozens of work programs that we are working on parallel, and of course, some of them are percolating up to the surface when the time is right to have council input or to get guidance from the Planning Commission. And some of those are work programs that are going on without a lot of noise and a lot of notification. And as you stated, Mr. Mayor, it will be for us very important to learn from this city council what they see as priorities over the next 12 months or 24 months, whatever time you might choose to 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 select. And again, it's I echo your your sentiments that we really hope to gain some insights as to where this council likes to see priorities for us. And I hope that at the end of this session, we will have clarity. And of course, if necessary, we will be happy to come back to you and give you some time estimates as well, because some of those programs will take probably a few months to implement, if not longer. So without further ado, our Assistant City Manager, Ned Rosso, and Arthur Sira, has prepared a presentation that is based on 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 value drivers and not on departments. And he promised me he can do it in 20 minutes or less.
All right, and the timer starts now. No, I'm just kidding.
And it starts with, at the top, with cascading goals, with the city's vision, mission, value drivers, strategic priorities that follow the needs of the knowledge holders, and then City's staff work program. The city's council's mission statement to Monterey, to be able to live, work, and visit. And our mission statement is to promote equal access to the entire community, to Monterey City Council, by ensuring a safe, healthy, and tolerant economically vibrant and sustainable environment. Here are the city's value drivers. And you can see in a particular quarter, it includes quality of life, protection of the environment, the stewardship of the knowledge and retaining a high-quality workforce, the forest reservation diversity, first time, we use the government, active mobility, affordable housing, securing water source. How does we use this process? Again, this is a process that we go through twice a year to help keep the city council focused on priorities, both staff, keep the focus on what's important to you, as well as the community members, and it helps amplify the needs and balance what's important, what's urgent, what's less important, and less urgent, and also identifies and highlights the wide range of initiatives that could operate throughout the city. From a resource allocation perspective, we also went to emphasize the mission that is important here.
Is your mic on?
My mic is on.
Okay, now, now it's, is this better? I'm not going to go through the other slides. We had it muted over at the desk here. So from a resource allocation perspective, every initiative requires legal review, analysis, as well as recommendations. And it takes quite a bit of time, as you can imagine. Most of the staff work plan items that are in your packet, they do not include the ongoing efforts or the routine service delivery that our departments provide. So you will not see the thousands of service calls from the fire department or police department, or hundreds, if not thousands, of permits processed by planning or building inspection. These are special projects or initiatives, policy issues that are relevant to us and that are are new. Also, we, of course, like to remind council and the community, we are continuing to operate on lean staffing levels and do what we can, and it's hard to do more with less resources. And we are a small, yet full-service city government that serves 30,000 residents. And our staff does our best to balance expectations with the council and the community, given the fiscal and staffing realities that we have to work with. So back to the value drivers, I'll be going through each of the value drivers, not listing every single staff work plan item, but highlighting just a few to give council and the community an idea of some of the items that are part of the staff work program. Our city manager, city attorney, as well as our executive team are available either in person here in the chambers or virtually on Zoom to answer questions that you may have about any of the work plan items that we're presenting to you today. So the first value driver is umbrella value driver on the city's quality of life, and it focuses on quality of life, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and equitable access to affordable housing and maintaining a safe environment. And one of the strategic priorities focused within this value driver is health and wellness. You can see our city staff have been focused on vaccine and booster clinics over the past three years, meals, and fresh produce distribution, and an ordinance that restricts the sale of flavored vaping products. On the public safety side, most recently, the fire department completed a standards of coverage and community risk assessment study. A major project is the police records management effort, and also replacing the aging fire department fleet. Currently, the city is going through a contract analysis of the current fire services contracts that the city provides to Carmel, Pacific Grove, the Monterey Peninsula Airport District, and City of San City to determine the fiscal liability of of those contracts as it relates to our city's service delivery. The, another strategic priority here is the emergencies and community resiliency. There's a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan that we've been working on with the county that has been approved, as well as a tsunami signage and education. Also, part of that is an update on the safety element to the general plan, Community Wildfire Protection Plan, and as you see in this photo, exercises with the Coast Guard as well as Presidio of Monterey. Vegetation fuel reduction continues to be a high priority and City Staff Work Program item. Maintaining a physically and mentally active city is also an important piece. We've been working and opened in partnership with the disc golf club, the disc golf facilities at Ryan Ranch, balancing the needs of pickleball players and neighbors in the Monterey Vista neighborhood, currently going through an operational analysis of the Monterey Sports Center to determine the most effective service delivery, staffing, and operational model. And then also this year will be focused on planning for the future of the old capital site. In terms of learning and connections at the library, as you'll see in this photo, implemented a new RFID. This is a radio frequency identification inventory and borrowing system where folks can check out books, multiple books at a time, without having to scan each individual book, providing bookmobile service with reduced to neighborhoods that have limited access to library services. There will be an update to the children's reading and learning area as a result of MC Gives Grant and Young Merrill's Library, Young Readers' Mural at the library terrace. On the neighborhood concern side, coming up here and going through the environmental review process is the Laguna Grande Regional Park Trail Maintenance Strategy, tree mapping, the small cell ordinance that has been, that will be before you in a few weeks, and responding to concerns regarding the Monterey Regional Airport's expansion and impact on neighborhoods. Last but not least, funding NCIP projects is a strategic priority within our quality of life value driver. The next value driver focuses on the natural environment and climate change. And first here is protecting the National Marine Sanctuary, updating the local coastal plan, completing the stormwater trash capture project, and other efforts such as the 951 Del Monte Avenue groundwater remediation project. The photo here is an image of the Franklin Street Stormwater Trash Capture Project, which helps reduce pollutants into the marine sanctuary. Wharf Two and Sustainable Fishing is another strategic priority for council. The city helps financially support the Monterey Bay Fisheries Trust, and our harbor staff help remove derelict and abandoned vessels in the harbor. Also, this past year, the city advocated for the reopening of the commercial Dungeness crab fishery season.
Ned, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
The removal of the derelict and abandoned vessels, is that something like an ongoing thing, or is that something that we're picking up, giving new attention to?
Yes, it's an ongoing effort. In terms of the reducing greenhouse gas emissions, expanding the existing solar arrays continues to be a priority for the city. This image is from the conference center. And of course, expanding electric vehicle infrastructure. This year, some of the electric vehicle charging stations in the Cayenne Principale lot, as well as the downtown West Garage were upgraded to the charge point systems, and additional projects are in the planning stages. We also continue to integrate low emissions in electric vehicles into the city's fleet. There are some new electric vehicle trucks, but they're not widely available yet, and we're pre-planning for those as part of our efforts. Onto a very important value driver is fiscal stewardship. This coincides with the city's adopted core values that involve streamlining operations, looking at reasonable revenue enhancements, long-term planning, fiscal transparency, and community partnerships. And we'll start off with this strategic priority, which is managing revenues and expenditures. Some of these staff work plan items include repayment plans for long-term interfund borrowing, updating and simplifying the business license process, and also updating purchasing processes. On the revenue enhancement side, the cannabis retail roadmap implementation continues. Council this spring will receive a update on the cannabis efforts, including a regulatory ordinance that the council will consider before we open up the RFP process for potential cannabis operators. Also going through, I think we're in year two of the transient occupancy tax, also known as TOT, or hotel audits, to ensure that the city is receiving its fair share of revenues and that visitors are being taxed appropriately, and updating citywide processes for fee and fine collections for citations. Restoring and establishing city reserves is another strategic priority. You can see here is a photo of a sports center and some of the needs in the auditorium. And restoring the fund for economic uncertainty to 16.6% of general fund operating expenses is a goal. Most cities have at least 20%, if not more, of general fund reserve. And also, this past year, council established the conference center, sports center pension reserves that are in dire need of funding, in addition to other other facility needs. Establishing a sea level rise contingency fund within Thailand is also one of one of the goals that we've done, and continuing to fund those as well is critical to the city's fiscal health. Business retention and attraction, we've got a great team that removes graffiti fairly quickly and works with private operators. Continuing to work with business community on cleanup and beautification is one priority and one work plan item. And then supporting the military installations. So as many of you are familiar with the Monterey model, where the city provides base operations support to the Presidio of Monterey, that continues. Also, and you'll find this on Have Your Say Monterey, the, we're completing the Monterey Bay Military Communities Compatible Use Plan. That's an effort that community development is leading. And of course, also supporting the advocacy organizations such as the Monterey Bay Defense Alliance and the California Defense Communities Alliance. Many of you know how important the military is to the economic vitality of the city and economic health. We continue to seek grant funding opportunities as well. This past year, actually hired a grant consultant to help streamline grant funding opportunities, both on the solicitation side, as well as assisting with management of grants. These are state, local, federal, and regional grants, whether they're for the sports center, library, transportation, safety, or housing grants, such as the local early action planning or permanent local housing allocation funding. Storm and sewer infrastructure funding is also part of the grants that we look for. And then park facility, as well as other facility repair and replacement, is part of this fiscal health strategic priority. The conference center reserve we talked about, as well as sanitary sewer rate study. And then addressing the city's pension liability, as many of you heard from the last pension liability report from a consultant last, early last year, the city currently has over $170 million in unfunded pension liability, and a section 115 trust will, is an item that will be before you in March, I believe, to to consider. And then technology and business solutions, this really does help streamline the city's operations and provides better and improved customer service to the public. New recreation software was just launched earlier this month. The financial enterprise resource planning is in the works. We've created online permitting tools throughout various city departments, and online service request portal that's being developed with Public Works and the IT Division. A new public computer and printing solution for the library, parking technology such as pay-by-plate that launched last year, and an event management solution for our conference center staff. Other technology efforts include updating GIS aerial photos, new mobile computers for fire department vehicles, fire inspection and pre-planning software, and also cybersecurity training to to help manage the cybersecurity risks throughout the city. You can just imagine the level of technology that all of our departments rely on, and that help serve the public in a in a positive way. Developing and retaining the quality workforce is another key value driver that council adopted, and part of that means providing our city staff with the tools, resources, and coaching that they need to be successful. And part of that this year is launching an updated employee performance coaching and feedback system. Also, we've been at the forefront of providing employees with early, early on with vaccine and face covering policies and contact tracing, and trying to keep our employees, employees safe. Diversity, equity, and inclusion is another strategic priority that falls within our workforce umbrella, and that includes providing DEI training for all city employees. That took place in January, and we're working on ways to continue that training for new employees and ongoing training. We've also this summer worked with a student from CSUMB on developing a DEI framework that is currently being finalized as well. On the employee safety and wellness front, continuing the AB 1825 harassment prevention training, and of course, employee safety training. And then providing employees with fair competitive and market-driven labor negotiations for all of the city's bargaining units. All right, we're getting down to some of the remaining value drivers. This one is securing water sources, and that means affordable and sustainable water sources for the city now and into the future. And city councils played a very strong leadership role in encouraging the State Water Resources Control Board to open up water allocations for affordable housing specifically. And staff continue to collaborate with the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, at the state level, on the adopted regional housing needs allocation, the Lake Alastero Urban Diversion, and the Olivier Street Stormwater Diversion Projects. Another value driver that's very important to our community and to the city council is to support efforts and policies that provide equitable access to affordable housing in Monterey and the region. First of two strategic priorities here is affordable housing policies, and council adopted the policies on mixed-use ground for uses for residential. And then currently ongoing is the exclusive negotiating agreement with MedPenn Housing for the city-owned affordable housing site at Manberan Street. And then this is a policy issue that staff, we anticipate, will will be discussing with council on an ongoing basis here and and probably. maybe even this evening. On the strategic priority to address homelessness, this is of course a priority as well. We have an award-winning multi-disciplinary outreach team called MDOT with the city's police department as a lead, coordinating with homeless advocacy organizations and then also pursuing CDBG public service grants. Although we do recognize that we are less competitive for these grants due to our status in the eyes of the federal government as an, quote unquote, affluent community. Active mobility is another value driver and this helps expand opportunities for people of all ages and abilities to bike and walk safely through active transportation accessibility and safety initiatives. And one of them is to, one of these priorities is to repair and maintain our street and storm drain infrastructure. There's the traffic signal adaptive system, safety enhancements for Peds, bicyclists and motorists. We have a traffic congestion mitigation program. And then road rehabilitation, storm drain infrastructure that's funded through the Senate Bill One, SB One, as well as measures P and S, and then the regional TMC measure X, which trickle down to the city of Monterey in certain instances. And then parking facilities and programs, over the years, parking division has done an outstanding job in trying to modernize the various parking tools and technology that's available, especially through license plate readers and other types of technology. This is a photo from one of the parking garages. Last year, launched the pay by plate program and then ongoing and just launched as the waterfront parking expansion project. Regional trail networks as well, all of you have probably heard about the four tag, the four-door regional trail in Greenway, and work to close the gap on North Fremont, the North Fremont Gap project. And then mobility for peoples of all ages and abilities. We're currently undergoing an ADA transition plan update. We actually have two town hall meetings tomorrow on that. And also continuing work to enhance the transportation network to include bikes, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, updating curb ramps to be ADA compliant, audible pedestrian signal installations, and then safety education and other programs such as safe routes to school. And then our, one of our last value drivers, there's I believe two more. This one is historic preservation and diversity. And this is relating to preserving, promoting and maintaining our city's historical resources through responsible stewardship and historic preservation that highlights the contributions and perspectives of all people who are part of Monterey's diverse history. And this is interpreting Monterey's history from a social justice lens. This is a screen grab from a story that actually launched on Monday on KSBW about Buffalo Soldiers and the history of Buffalo Soldiers in the Presidio of Monterey and in the city of Monterey. There's currently an updated Path of History Master Plan that our library and museums team is working on through a grant that's looking at potentially expanding the path of history to include the Pearl District, which was home to a Japan Town here in Monterey. And reviewing the path of history to ensure that it tells the stories from a perspective of the first peoples and the diverse groups that shaped Monterey's past and present. And then protecting Monterey's maritime history, currently working and have been working with the Western Flyer Foundation and a variety of other federal and regional stakeholders to bring the fishing boat chartered by John Steinbeck back to Monterey. This is a photo of the Western Flyer currently up in Washington State. And then last but not least, a value driver of transparent and inclusive government, and this is soliciting input from all. We do this through digital media and in-person engagement. A couple of years ago, launched the Have Your Say Monterey online engagement portal, implemented successfully the transition from at-large to district-based elections, the inclusive appointment process for the at-large city council member vacancy last year. And continuing to try to find ways to engage with folks again, not only online, but also in person through programs like Parking Day, as you see here with one of our library staff members, signing folks up for library cards. And we also do try to provide accurate and timely information on city issues through social media and other efforts as well. The city website expanded and we continue to expand those features in 2022. And another priority for council was to provide these value drivers and priorities as we're doing today to review them at least twice a year and gather feedback from council and the community. And then last but not least, partnerships with nonprofits and others. And those partnerships include programs such as the Monterey Regional Stormwater Management Program. And that concludes the presentation on each of the staff work program items. Again, this is not a comprehensive list, but just a highlight of some of the many things that our city staff are working on and happen working on. And that concludes my presentation.
Awesome. Thank you, Nat, for the presentation and we'll bring it to the council for questions.
Don't have any questions, but you know, a couple of things I'd like to, I like that are priorities.
But maybe we want to do public comment first or?
Yeah, we'll see those questions. Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Any questions? Customer?
Yes, I had a question. So first of all, thank you. Awesome job. I mean, you guys stay extremely busy and we know this, we see this every day as we go along our, our day. But I mean, it just, it just blows my mind every time looking at all the things that you're working on. And our city is benefiting because of it. But I did have a couple of questions on some of the things that you're doing, just so I can get clarification for myself. On the permitting tool, what permit is that for? Is that just a housing permit? What kind of, is that any type of permit?
A variety of permits. We've updated the business license permitting process online so that folks can, can apply for a business license and manage and renew online. Also in the planning, we have an online planning permit process, building permit. Our community development director, Kim Cole, can expand upon that. If you're interested in learning more about the work that's being done in housing and community development.
Right. So on the bill, so this online permitting tool you were talking about is mainly for housing, is that correct?
It's across the, we, when we talk about the online permitting tool, it's more on the planning side, but also a variety, if we look at how can we try to streamline the process so that residents don't have to physically go into an office, whether that's the planning division building or in some cases finance to apply for a permit. Having an online process helps streamline not only the payment process, but also the application process.
And I would say that's the business community as well too, right? So the business community might have construction that they're doing or work that they're doing to their property that might require a permit and so.
Okay, so I'm just getting clarification. So it's for all, it streams all across the housing and planning and business. And so that, does it lay, lay out the process of after you submit this online of what the process, process is next? Is the process very clear?
That's correct. We do try to provide a guide online so that it's user-friendly and easy to use, whatever that software may be. A lot of the software is specialized depending on what specific permit or action is taken, whether that's paying for a, just this, this month, for example, launched the new recreation software, which is a different interface than say business license permitting. So folks can go online, sign up for classes, renew their sports center memberships online. And we know that technology isn't always easy for customers and for the public. We do try, we go through testing as well as, as well as gather feedback from the public if they find it to be, to be cumbersome. But those are some of the general steps that we take to, to ease customer interaction with the, with the various software that's, that is offered to the public.
Okay, thank you. And last question on MDOT, what addresses homelessness? Can you tell me more about that as far as the different ways? I know they were talking about the grants that you're trying to utilize and helping and working with some of the different collaborations and partnerships. But what else specifically are they doing with that?
Sure. And our chief of police, David Hober, is here and he'll give a sixty-second overview of the MDOT program.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member, for the question. Can see that I'm being harassed about the length of time that it takes me to answer.
I see that, that's okay.
So we're very proud of the multi-disciplinary outreach team. And basically, we have a community action team of officers that are specifically assigned to the team to address outreach issues and quality of life issues. That team works with a group of about six other service providers that come from Adult Protective Services with the county. Montage Health has a social worker, Monterey County Behavioral Health. YWCA Domestic Violence Advocate. Interim has an interim outreach counselor and the Veterans Resource Center all provide social workers. And none of those folks are paid for by the city of Monterey because they're either on grants or like two of those people work for the county, one works for Montage. They have what we call touch spaces at the police department where we have done backgrounds on them so they can access our police department. They have keys to the police department and they come into the police department and are present with the officers. So all the officers know them and they're a resource for those officers that have relationships with them. So for an example, if we have a officer that's working at two o'clock in the morning tonight and is talking to somebody who's unhoused and asks them if they would like to have resources and they say yes, our officer would ask them, okay, do you have a cell phone number or where will you be tomorrow between ten and two? They will then send an email to the CAT team, the Police Officer Signed Community Action Team. Those officers then will get with the social workers who would be in the office during regular hours and bring them out and help them to try to navigate all of the different systems that it is so difficult for people to navigate. And is, is one of the biggest barriers to those who are unhoused finding resources. In addition to that, we're currently looking at trying to perhaps add some sort of a homeless navigator position to assist with that as well. So those are, that's just a sixty-seven second briefing on the MDOT team. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And Dr. Barber, I do want to clarify, we are working on the online permitting for planning now. It has, it has not launched yet, but the permits offered now, and we can send you a list separately on parking as well as some of the other permits that are currently available.
That'll be great. Thank you so much.
Alrighty, anybody else in the council have questions?
I have a question. Thanking Nat for your presentation and staff. If you would, and if you have the information, maybe clarify a little bit for, for my general knowledge. There was mention of a contract grant writer. I'm curious to know why we would go with a contract grant writer versus in-house.
Happy to answer that. For, for the last, as long as I can remember, we've relied on city staff to, to solicit grants. Unfortunately, I think one of the challenges is that we're, some of the grants are so specialized and our staff aren't always aware of which grants are the ones that are most competitive. So we have a consultant who helps and we've been, it's a pilot program that we, we launched this past year to work with a grant writer to help identify those grants that are most competitive for the city and, and be able to write and author competitive grants that our staff are, may have limited resources to be able to do. You know, as we shared earlier, we've, for example, in traffic engineering, have a very small team and, and other, other divisions and departments. So having a grant writer has been actually very helpful and able to, to identify where the grants are at all levels of government and it helped us track, track that. And we meet every month with, with the grant writer. There's a report and we're happy to share that with you as well.
If I may add one, one, one more clarification. So we actually went through the exercise, what is better in-house or outside? And, and we, we talked to some groups that had experience and we also had experience with an in-house grant writer and what, that was not really, I want to call it successful. And what we learned was it's hit and miss with grant writers. You, you can run an organization and you have an excellent grant writer, grant writer, he or she leaves. And you get the next grant writer and the person really is, is not the go-getter. So we weighed the pros and cons and all of that. And we decided ultimately to go with a professional grant writing and grant identification consulting business that works in, I think, ninety, hundred, ten cities here up and down the coastline and feel that the services we get from them, which includes, as Nat said, identifying grants that are, that we might qualify for writing the grant and also managing the grant would be the more appropriate way than have this hit and miss that we hire some, someone and we really don't get the bang for the buck that we had hoped for. And again, that was based on our experience, but also talking to other organizations such as MPUSD, for instance, who, who shared their experiences with us as well.
You all set, Jim? Okay, perfect. Yeah, I have one question. First of all, again, as I think, as Kim said, great work. Like I'm so proud of all the work that our city staff are doing. And I'll more to say later during comments. The question I had, had to do with kind of the financial sustainability. And it just reminded me, I think at one time, maybe last year, we hired a contractor to look at the sports center operations and management. And I don't believe we've seen that report yet, but could get maybe just a brief update. When, when you expect we'll see that report?
Sure. Happy to. We've been working our, our great Parks and Rec team as well, city manager's office with a consultant. I actually was on the phone with the principal this afternoon about the effort. They're going through two phases. One is a broad recommendations on, on the management side and the other is a pro forma to identify the fiscal, the financial feasibility of the operations based on certain percentages of cost recovery. So that report is being refined, I would say, in the next thirty days. We'll have the report finalized. Happy to share that with council.
Yeah, we are right now at a ninety-five percent level of that. We are finalizing, we are asking questions. We want to have some more what-if scenarios in there. But we have a good idea already where we are with our sports center and, and also the fiscal analysis of that. We are just trying to dot all, all the i's and cross all the t's. And I wanted to say the other way around and then it didn't sound right in my head. And, and get, get to a hundred percent product that we then will present. So we're right now at ninety-five, ninety-six percent with, with both elements, both phases.
Thank you.
I want to borrow the seven seconds back from the chief. On fiscal stewardship, value driver number three. I just, I thought about this, reflected, and we've had a variety of updates all the way through every year. But I don't remember seeing recently the investment reports that we used to get from our outside portfolio managers from the bank. So I'm wondering what the timing of that is. So two-part question, what's the statute say we're supposed to be doing? And what's the effectiveness of what we can expect that we should see on our investment portfolio statements?
Rafaela's online letter, please.
And here comes our finance director, Rafaela King.
Good afternoon, everyone. So ours, investment reports, we actually don't bring them directly to council, but they are updated on the, once we get them every month. From the investment from Chandler, we actually update them and upload them on our website. So they are there. We can change that and bring them to council if you would like to have a receipt and file if that's what you're, if you're prepared. As far as the treasures reports, we put them up quarterly. We typically wait for the last one for June thirty until after the audit is completed so that we're not redoing anything that changes during the audits for the final month. So that one hasn't been uploaded yet, but as soon as our, our act was completed, that will be uploaded to the city's website as well. And the first quarter will be completed too.
Okay, thank you. So while I've got the, the airtime, I would just like to say that I'd like to see the reports at least twice a year. So if we would able, be able to, you know, give you time to figure out how you want to do that. But I think that would be a reasonable thing that I think we have a fiscal responsibility, an oversight responsibility from a council seat. thing that I think we have a fiscal responsibility, an oversight responsibility from a council seat. So I think twice a year for me would be a comfortable goal.
Okay, no problem.
That was the only goal, or the question I had.
Perfect. Okay. And with that, let's go out to the public for public comments. So let's start in the chamber. If anybody wants to speak on this item, feel free to step forward and okay. Anybody else in the chamber?
Good afternoon. Tom Rowley, resident of Fisherman's Flats, president of the Homeowners' Residents' Association. And we're the only group that has residents, which includes renters in our association. Other groups have property owners in different neighborhoods. So there's about four items I'd like to just quickly hit you on. One, I'm a little disappointed on transparency. Whenever you guys meet, you should let the public comment. I think that was a mistake to say no public comment beginning meeting. You don't meet that often, twice a month. This is unusual meeting, study session, chance for people to stand up and make comments. Transparency, that's the wrong move for transparency. Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary. I was just received yesterday my appointment for additional two years as the public rep, primary rep for business and industry. Monica Law, who is head of the local Chamber Commerce, she is the newly appointed alternate. I've been on the Advisory Council for six years. I met with some of the previous, the former mayor and some of the other council members, Mr. Smith, about what the Advisory Council does. We went, we're going from bimonthly meetings to four meetings this year. We have a new superintendent for the Monterey Bay National Marine Sanctuary. Some of you probably don't know, probably Kim and Gino do not know that their headquarters is down at Heritage Harbor at the, right on the waterfront. Anyway, I've been trying to set up an informal meeting between Kim Cole and Lisa, who is the new director and the new head of the sanctuary. She took Paul Michelle's place to try and on an informal basis, because one of the issues I see coming down the pike is on the sea level rise. And that was mentioned, you have a fund that you've created to try and put some money aside, because that's going to be a big bucks project. Two quick items, parking impact in our neighborhood. We have, Foothill School was closed to regular by Monterey Peninsula Unified School District. The parking for the seven classes and the other renters at Foothill School have overflowed into the neighborhood. This just started last September. We don't have a solution. I don't like to come to the city with a problem unless I have a solution from our neighborhood. We haven't talked to PK Diffinball about this problem. He's aware of it. They've tried to make something, but some of the neighbors are complaining about parking. There's seven K through two classes charter schools that have moved into Foothill School since the school district closed it. And the last item is thank you for hiring a supporter for Tom Hardy in the Neighborhood Community Improvement Program that has been desperately needed for a long time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else in the chambers? Seeing that the majority of folks are staff.
I see. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Williamson and city council members. My comments, the city needs to protect standing trees such as a eucalyptus from the rhetoric that they are more prone to creating firestorms than other trees. All trees explode if subjected to very hot firestorms, and in fact, Angel Island is a good case in point, and many, many others. The California State Parks are hysterical about cutting eucalyptus trees, and no amount of evidence to the contrary will change their minds. The Native Plant Society and other well-meaning groups have done great harm in promoting a native plant diatribe advocating the slaying of millions of eucalyptus trees because they're non-native as well as millions of other non-natives, subjecting them to tons of pesticides and herbicides. These groups were unfortunately infiltrated by Monsanto in the early 50s by Neri Jackson, Public Relations Manager, for promoting Monsanto's herbicides. He was the co-founder of the California Exotic Pest Plant Council. He infiltrated the national force government agencies, the state parks and farmers, and native plant societies, and 55% of all plants in the U.S. are non-native. And yet, the Parks Department plants non-natives despite their own doctrine. So great care must be given that we don't fall into the money-driven trap that is destroying one of the most majestic trees on the planet and one that serves the monarch and other species as well. I thought that we got 10 minutes for this, but we don't. Okay. The military. The military is renowned for polluting where it resides. A report by CHOMP in 1991 showed that Monterey has the highest rate of breast and prostate cancer in the nation. We are a superfund site. What money will the military put in a trust fund for the city to ensure its toxic cleanups? It is not even able to clean up from the last presence in the Vietnam War and World War II. Its presence will endanger residents and visitors alike with unfriendly fire, be it nuclear or otherwise, because it will be a strategic target. Will it provide us citizens with bomb shelters in case of attack? Thirdly, no mention of the train as opposed to making more parking accommodations for tourists. We need to provide comfortable, affordable buses for tourists that wish to take the train to our town. We need to make it faster and more comfortable than their drive from there to here. So that would be from Selina's Train Station. You can't use MST buses because they don't promote a cushy, safe ride. They are noisy, have no seat belts, take too much time to get to their destination, and so few people want to take them. So these are just a few of my comments. Thank you so much for this.
All right, let's go to public comments online, please.
Certainly. First, we have Esther.
Good afternoon, everybody. As usual, great presentation by staff. I wanted to just bring up a couple of points. I realize that the cannabis topic has been long and drawn out, and we have this great roadmap. But at this point, staff should be following how the cannabis industry is actually slowly coming apart. I know people in this county and in our city that were employed by that industry who have been laid off. The Weekly did a piece last week, I think, on the situation as well. It is well documented by news sources. So I'm not saying you shouldn't do it, but I'm just cautioning you on how much you're going to rely on that income, depending on what you're going to plan that income to go towards. Secondly, I wanted to thank the police department for their ongoing efforts with the homeless community. I have been on ride-alongs with them, and I have personally witnessed the work that they do with MDOT. And I've also had to call them to help a homeless person that I had come in contact with, and I wanted to help her get where she needed to go for help. They are, you know, very, very committed to helping the homeless problem, and those people, unfortunately, they cannot force them. We'll see what happens with this new thing coming around that's being done in New York and possibly here that those that can't care for themselves are going to be forced into going into some sort of hell. But at the end of the day, the CAT department, the CAT team and NDOT are great examples of what other, you know, cities should be doing. And I also want to thank Chief Hober for bringing back the Community Academy. It is scheduled for, I think, mid-March, and it's important because that is how people learn about what the police can and can't do and what the city, what the city can and can't do about a number of things. Lastly, I want to mention that the best tool that you have for homelessness prevention is affordable rent, and many other cities in this state have already addressed that, and I am hoping that this gets handled locally. And for the record, I am the Laguna Grande president of my neighborhood association, and I am a renter. So I'm going to correct Mr. Rowley because we have a renter on our neighborhood association board. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker, let me get the timer reset here. Our next speaker will be Nina Beatty. Ms. Beatty, if you could unmute, please. It may be that Ms. Beatty is called in by telephone, as I might recognize her number, so hold on one second. Let me try a different way. Go ahead, please.
This is Nina, this is Nina Beatty. Monterey is not a safe or healthy place for me or many others, and has grown worse, especially with 5G and wireless tech increases. The city leadership has broken the trust of residents repeatedly, particularly during the 2017, 2018 cell tower debacle. Secondly, protecting the environment requires ecologically responsible and pragmatic solutions, you say. But Monterey's tree and vegetation policies are not science-based. Killing healthy trees is wrong. The city also increases fire danger by forest thinning and so-called vegetation fuel reduction, which dries out and stresses forests, and further worsens by conflating fire reduction with, quote, "non-native removal." For the record, eucalyptus are natives. Their fossils are found in the Americas millions of years before Australia. Their trunks are filled with water, unlike other species, and have functioned as fire breaks like on Angel Island. Fires occur often from wind-carried embers. Flammable houses and building materials are a problem, as well as smart meters on every building, which are a serious fire and electrical hazard, which should be removed citywide. COVID, a sound, science-based approach is to halt the city-sponsored COVID mRNA vaccine program, and the mandatory policy for employees is outdated, flawed, and dangerous. These vaccines are not effective, as the British Medical Journal and other experts who looked at vaccine protocols repeatedly publicized, and current data is showing vaccines are not safe. Hazards include myocarditis, other serious injuries, and death, with special risks to Hispanic and African-American people. Experts warn before rollout and company documents and the CDC VAERS report system have now shown this, stop this program. Military installations. Monterey's continuing promotion of Pentagon facilities and missions disagrees with your mission statement. The city has not evaluated their costs, which likely exceed any gain by orders of magnitude. You're familiar with Camp Lejeune. You saw the APR article last February on the pollution, illness, and deaths caused by Florida toxins. It overlies the seaside basin and our drinking water. The military has poisoned groundwater, drinking water, soil, ocean, and air. The Navy microwave and EMF pollution, the toxic sonar, the 5G tower on the beach, the munitions dumped in the bay, like near the commercial war. Terrible environmental consequences, and future expansion harms the ocean environment. You'll lose the tourists, and you'll lose your real estate values. The compatible use plan study violated the Brown Act and the RFP requirements. Only two public meetings were held, and only one was legally noticed. I called for the process to be halted because of the significant violations. The conclusions are for the military, not the community. Next, on record retention. With our technology now, it's possible to retain all records permanently, and that would be best for the city residents. On pickleball, residents in their homes have priority. Balance doesn't apply. Support the residents on this issue. Also, the new GIS aerial photos of the city, this is a privacy issue. Is the city, how much resolution are in these photos? Are, is the city now peeping over people's fences? And the monitoring of the dump site that underlies the city housing off North Fremont next to the PG&E substation, is there monitoring? And what about the Navy contamination?
Drop a few comments. Awesome. Do we have anybody else online?
Mr. Mayor, before we continue, I just want to state for the record that, of course, Ms. Beatty is entitled to her opinion about the vaccines. But what she was presenting is scientifically completely flawed and is not what the common understanding is of the efficacy of the vaccine. So it's just her opinion, but it's not a stated scientific, reliable information. Yeah, if people want to verify that, please go to the CDC or the county websites.
Thank you, Steph.
We do have Jean Rash to speak. Jean, go ahead, please. Jean, we can't hear you. Not sure what to do because you're unmuted, but we cannot hear you here on Zoom.
Jean, maybe you want to call in? I'm not sure if that might be an option to allow us to hear your public comments.
I will try, just in case it helps. I'm going to, Jean, I'm going to remove the speaking, and then you, I'll call on you again. Maybe that will work. Okay, let's try this again. If you could unmute. Well. One more try. Could you please try unmuting? We just haven't been able to hear you in the chamber or on Zoom. There's nobody left. All right. Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe since Jean isn't able to connect, maybe we should move.
Okay, so why don't we move forward, and if we're able to get connected somehow with Steph, we can, we can open public comment back up so that we can allow her to share her public comments. All right. Thank you, Clementine. So we're going to bring it back to the council here for discussion and deliberation. So who wants to go ahead and kick us off? Go ahead.
I'd be happy to.
We can start with seniority, I guess, is what we're doing.
Well, so first of all, as I, as I mentioned before, I really want to commend our staff. Like, wow. We're doing a lot of really good things in this city, a lot of things I'm extremely proud of. And I think all of us should be proud of many of these initiatives. So I just wanted to highlight a few that stood out to me for, you know, for various reasons. One, in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think we've made a lot of progress. We still have a lot of work, ways to go, but I have noticed that our senior management is more diverse, and I think that's important. I know in the past, I don't know all of our staff, but you know, I've seen the chief swearing in new police, and I see diversity there, and that's important. And I really applaud our staff for that. The Buffalo Soldier story is a huge and important story in Monterey's local history and our nation's military history. I'm really proud and glad to hear that that's being incorporated into our, into our history. And I really was excited to hear about expanding, you know, the path of history. It's the right thing to do. And it's time, and that's great. So, you know, kudos, really kudos to staff. In terms of the physically active city, you know, the disc golf was an issue for quite a while. And I know it's now open, and I think that's great. You know, the pickleball, again, another kind of conundrum. It sounds like we're making progress there. And I'm really looking forward to the old Capitol site, that we finally start working on a plan for that. It sounds like that's, that's gonna, you know, the planning will start to happen this year, because what a huge asset. And we want to make sure that asset is accessible to the residents. So that's great. Expanding our solar arrays and our EV infrastructure. Again, we've got a lot of work to do there, but we've started, and that's good. Let's see. Traffic flow, you know, again, I want to say about six years ago, traffic congestion when we surveyed residents was either the number one or the number two concern. You know, housing and homelessness have been up there for quite a while. Traffic has also been, I don't know that we've done a recent survey, but Traffic has also been, I don't know that we've done a recent survey, but we've made a lot of progress. The adaptive light technology is making a huge difference. When you drive in our city and you go to some neighboring cities that don't have that, you see the difference. So that's awesome. Transparency and community engagement. I think the Have Your Say Monterey is a great, you know, great way for us to hear from the community. And that's important. A couple of priorities that I'd like to highlight. Housing and homelessness, you know, when I came on the council 12 years ago, I came on because those were issues that I felt we weren't really addressing. We're addressing them. And, you know, kudos to the police department. The MDOT's a great program. And we've made progress in other ways, you know, with our partners, Community Human Services. We've built a homeless shelter for women and families in Seaside. We have another one that will be coming online, hopefully, Schuman House in Monterey this year, again, for women and families. But, you know, I think we live in a community where we don't want and we shouldn't see homelessness. This is a problem we can address, and I think we still have more work to do there. I don't know whether a project Home Key is something we can do in the city. I don't know whether there's a potential site. But, you know, getting folks off the streets, good for them, and it's good for the whole community. I think we also need to just be aware that this Schuman House is probably going to need some support from the city. We want to make sure that that's successful. Incidentally, the homeless shelter in Seaside Casa de Noche Buena, they've got a waiting list like a couple hundred people, you know, on an ongoing basis. So, all right, that's it on homelessness. And affordable housing, you know, they're not the same problem, although they are connected. As Esther mentioned, helping keeping people housed, you know, keeps them off the street. So we've made progress on that, again, in my 10 years or so on council. We've had some really good, successful projects. The 18 units for seniors on Van Buren Street is a great project. The Monterey Hotel was a more challenging and problematic project, but in the end, another 18 affordable units. The 10 units in the, you know, in the downtown, built on the old Valero gas station site. Two of those are affordable. I wish all of them had been, and I think if I could go back in time, would have done that differently. But that's not enough. So we've got the one project over here. I would be interested in seeing if we could bring back a couple of those other projects. I don't know if this new council is interested in looking at some of those sites that the council chose not to move forward with. I don't know what our capacity is. I know we can only do so much, but we got to do more on this, and we got to do it faster. And if that means hiring some consultants to help us implement, then I think we need to do that. The cannabis ordinance, you know, Esther's right. That industry is challenged, as many are, but there's still opportunity there. There's still opportunity for us to make revenue, important revenue that we can use to help the city. We had a ballot measure passed with a supermajority. So I would really like to see us expedite that, just so we can start. I'd like to see us be able to embed that in our budget for this year. Fire and electric grid resilience is something that, you know, was highlighted yet again this year. I don't know if there's anything we can do as a city, but if there is, we should really do it. But we really need to think out of the box to figure out, how do we make our homes more fire resilient? And also, how do we make our grid more resilient? Because this is not normal. Multimodal safety. Glad to hear that we're going to be looking at closing that gap on North Fremont. As somebody who bikes, it would be really great to be able to get out to Canyon Del Rey in a safe way, and be really great to get from there to, you know, to the former Fort Ord safely. So I don't know how fast that can move, but, boy, you know, I'd love to see that project completed. We've got the wireless project, which is important. With respect to water, I'd really love to see us, you know, we can't control Cal-Am. We can't control Monterey Peninsula Water Management District. We certainly can't control State Water Board Authority or Coastal Commission. And there are things that are going to be happening at those levels. We can advocate, and that's great. I haven't seen evidence that they really listen to us that much. What we can control, for example, is El Estero and that water diversion. And, you know, I'd really like to explore that. And also even exploring, you know, is it possible to make El Estero deeper so that we could capture more of that stormwater runoff and divert it to Monterey One? And can we work out a deal with Monterey One and Cal-Am so that we get a certain percentage of the water that is produced for affordable housing and housing in Monterey? I think that's right, and I think Pacific Grove did that with their water project. I think we should get credit for some of the water we produce, and I'd really love to see that happen. Again, it's something, talked to Tom Moore probably 10, 12 years ago. He was like, yeah, it's possible, and, you know, we're still talking about it, but I think we're maybe getting there. I'd love to see that done. So lots of good things that are going on. Thank you to staff for all of your hard work. You're doing great.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilor Rafa.
He raises his hand.
Okay, Councilor Grisg.
Thank you, staff, for, again, the presentation. And listening to the list of items that were shared just reminds me why it is that I love living in Monterey. And I think those are many of the reasons also why our residents enjoy being in the city. I've been thinking about what my priorities are for the entire city and specifically thinking about the areas that I'm, at this point, still more familiar with, near my neighborhood, District Four. So the inspiration for the priorities come from that area, but I think they're also priorities that are very applicable throughout the city. So one of the main things that I've been looking at is the revitalizing of very specific neighborhoods. I'm thinking about specifically North Fremont. But again, I think there's opportunity to revitalize our downtown, you know, and other areas like that through the city. And I think it's important to pay attention to that, not only for the folks that come and visit us every year from all parts of the world, but also for our neighbors, our residents. I mean, there have been many times that I walk out of my house and wish I could walk over to a coffee shop right down the street from me and have a coffee with my neighbor. I think it's really important that we create those spaces for our residents. So that, to me, is one of my top priorities. And I think it's also very connected to other challenges that we are encountering and that we should also be paying attention to, like housing and, you know, just the supporting new businesses and, you know, providing incentives for more commerce and that kind of thing. So that's one of my top priorities. Another top priority is paying attention to what our renting population is telling us. I mean, you know, I try to leave emotion out of this equation in trying to think about possible solutions, but it's really difficult to leave emotion out. It breaks my heart to see folks struggling just to get into an apartment. And I think there's, we need to pay really close attention to that and try to provide opportunities for folks to be able to manage that a little bit better. It's a tough conversation to have. It's a challenging, layered issue. Having been a renter in the past, having been a homeowner, having been a landlord, I see the pain points from both sides. I think it's important that we think outside the box and figure out strategies where everybody who's involved feels like they're walking away, maybe not with 100% of the pie, but a good portion of it. Of course, transportation and active transportation, those are really, you know, close to my heart. I really want to see folks being out and about and living healthy. So whatever we can do to further that in all parts of the city. I concur. I would love to see that gap project, you know, finished as soon as possible. But I also know that we have a lot of opportunity to start thinking about how do we connect our neighborhoods to those main trails? So how do I get from my house to the main trails so that we can start establishing commute paths in areas where we don't see them yet? So I think I'm going to leave it at that. Once again, thank you to staff for putting this information together and for all the work that you do every day. I've been in this position for about a month now, and it's just the information that I have now had access to from this site is very inspiring, and it really confirms and strengthens that love that I have for this city. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Gina. You could have kept going on. You were on a good track. I was engaged. That's what I said.
Okay, thank you. All good stuff to hear from my fellow council members. Thank you very much. I think, yes, it is. I will get it closer, or I'll start yelling. No kidding. I just wanted to kind of cover and highlight, a lot of it's already been covered for me. I want to establish, first to say, thank you to city staff and to the community members together collectively. You know, when you look back at what 2022 gave us, and as we look forward to 2023, as we set our priorities, you know, there are so many good things that have happened, that have been done with the city manager and all of the city staff, and we have a fantastic team. But thank you for everybody, their time, their extra ideas, their willingness to really push the projects, the accomplishments, super job on so many different levels. And also on managing the resources. I don't think we've come, or we've had reports come back to us this whole year where we've had that, like many cities have, uh-oh, whoops, we missed it, and we need another million, or we need another $2 million to close the gap. I mean, we hear that from other cities all the time. That's not the way the city operates, and I really appreciate that, that it's consistent, it's quality-driven, and promises made or promises kept, and we really appreciate that. We hold tonight a staff report for the council agenda that I think is 39 pages of priorities. There's nine vision statements and then lots and lots of priorities. I just leaned over and wanted to clarify in my mind, what was our total budget for 2022? Here's $183 million. If you want to know how we spent it, you can look at the budget, you can drill down into this, and there's a lot of accomplishments that are listed in here. So a lot of things to be proud of. So what's left and what are my priorities? Because I think that's what city staff wants to hear from us. For me, it's community resilience, and as I look back in the last two and a half years through COVID, I think we've all been challenged with that, but came out better than many other cities. People, health, the support our, the city government's able to give to our community to drive the number one important thing for me is the quality of life in Monterey, and that takes on so many different facets. Drilling down a little bit, parks, recreation, and a lot of the activities that come from those places is really a high priority for me. Ocean and beaches. If we don't have clean and safe everything, we are not doing our job, and we always have challenges. We can't always do everything perfect, but to me, the priorities are the people, the environment, our beaches, our roads, and our abilities to get to parks and the rec trail, and all of that is high priority. All that takes money. And it requires us to figure out how much money we have and divide it up and set priorities and then get out of the way and let our city staff execute that. And here tonight is almost kind of a report card of looking back. A lot of these things that we've identified in here in the last couple of years have actually been checked, been accomplished, and there's a status report in here. So I really encourage anybody out there, the members of the public, to go through this and ask yourself what's been accomplished on the list, and there's quite a bit. Continuing traffic priorities, continuing with the traffic across the city in every neighborhood with the purpose of trying to reduce the speed, reduce accidents, continue to commit to zero, help me out, Andrea, are you here? Vision zero, thank you. Vision zero, to make sure people are safe. And so that is a high priority for me, and to continue trying to find ways to fund additional areas that can use adaptive signal light control because it works, and we look forward to expanding that. I too share the hope that we can see something happen specifically to North Fremont. I look across, and I just did a mental count of the properties that face North Fremont. And there are six properties that come to mind that are stagnant, that are opportunities. I don't want to get into the reasons why families and owners, some here, some out of town, aren't doing what they need to do. I get it that it's money, it's high interest rate, it doesn't pencil out. But I think we're at a time where we have to figure out, how do we force, or how do we work with, how do we influence, that's a better word, how do we influence those that maybe aren't living here and have property that has water, that have things that are approved, and yet they decide not to invest? I don't know what the mechanism is. It's legal, it's, you know, code, but man, it's frustrating. And that's a high priority for me to see things get built the way they should be built, and many of those are tied to housing. Excited as we see the old Capitol site move forward in my district, close to my neighborhood, where I used to walk my dog. What a wonderful opportunity, and I look forward to seeing how that's going to come together. Continuing, I don't think this is unique. I think everybody else has the same thing. City infrastructure, high priority for me to figure out how we, you know, each budget year, if we can save $125,000 for that building and $300,000 for that building, you know, just to say that we're starting and that capital improvement maintenance has to be done, and we're making these decisions to help the councils in 10, 12, and 20 years. And many of us won't even be here, but if they have the money that they need to renew, that's the goal. And among the priorities for the infrastructure is the tunnel. If we look at how impactful it would be if we lost the tunnel, if we lost one lane. If we lost one lane of the tunnel. If we, God forbid, we lose the tunnel entirely. What that does to this community from an economic impact. So I'd like to see staff maybe knows this already, but I'd like to see an assessment of where they think the infrastructure is for the tunnel and some of those key properties that we know we haven't touched the sports or the the youth center. So we know that we've got some buildings here and there. And another one, don't need an answer now, but I, I'd like to see us know soon what the plan is for Kona. The Casanova Oak Knoll Neighborhood Center. Hearing, hearing lots of concern that it's not getting back, it's not open yet. I know we have a plan, but I just would like to hear that relatively soon about where, when we can get to a point where it's being fully maximized and the book mobiles going there and childcare is, is back. One other thing I'll just say that a lot of what I said is money. It's hard to establish a lineal priority in an organization like this. It's not one through a hundred and twenty five because there's so many things that have to be done simultaneously. And I recognize that. Probably the, the largest frustration for any council member anywhere in the United States is the the balance of the demands and needs for the limited resources to fix and provide and how long it takes to fix and see projects come together. I haven't always been the most patient guy, probably getting on the council has helped. So my plea to, or the ask that I have for the community is that they look at documents like this, that you follow the budget process, that you please pay attention to see how there may be a plan, you might not be hearing about it. There's been a commitment, there's a priority, but it does take time managing a hundred and eighty million dollars, four hundred employees in a twelve month period of time around winter time and tourism and demands of the local residents. So there's a lot of moving parts. But just know that from where I sit and what I see, my weekly conversations with the city manager are great. And I get brought up to speed on many things like you all do and greatly appreciated. It gives me the ability to answer the questions very frequently, daily. And I get a high return of satisfaction from the people that I talk to when they know that stuff is happening. And the feedback I get is we have a great staff. That's very responsive and thank you. Really appreciate it to all. And look forward to this next year as we hone in and finalize some of these moving parts and we get more stuff done.
Eric. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Barber.
All right. So a lot of my colleagues have already summed up a lot of what I have on my mind as well, but I really appreciate the time that we have to do this, just like as we do personally, you know, a lot of people in January, they take time to reflect, right? And to make goals or resolutions or whatever you want to call it going forward. And so I really look at this as an opportune time for us to get together as a, as a city as a whole to be able to say, okay, what's next? So what do we continue? What do we, how are we doing? How did we do last year and how do we move forward this year? So I really appreciate that and appreciate all the work that has been done, which has already been said by staff. And the report that was given is that I've already alluded to earlier. I, I look at one of the things that definitely is on my plate that I think everybody has mentioned and that's housing. And so that's one of the things who I see where we're doing some work, but much needs to get done, especially with Rena and some of the other pieces that are coming in. We talk about homelessness. We, of course, M doc did a great presentation and those six minutes, but still it was great and, and letting us know some of the, the work that we're doing. But I believe it was S that said it earlier, we do need to do more, or I think it was also Alan has said that we do need, need to do more around the homelessness piece because even though there are two separate pieces, they are connected. And so I'd like to see what we can do toward even rental registries and other pieces where we can get resources because my thing is once we get the infrastructure, which that's a part of it in, of my agenda that I look at as well is the water piece because as you release more accessible and affordable water, then you can be able to have more infrastructure to put in place that can be able to even speak to what the state is talking to us about. But I feel that if you have the rental registry to have the resources for people so that they don't get to the point of homelessness, it makes a difference. And I believe we need to see what we need to do next. What's the, what's the next thing? Like when we, as we set these goals or resolutions of what we'd like to see, what does that look like timeline wise? You know, I don't know whether we go by timelines or what are we, what are we looking at? But I come from a, a business and academic mindset. So I always look at timelines of, if we're working on this project, how long do we think that will take? Even if it's a year, three years or whatever, but where should we be at this point? So that we can meet the goal, so that we can kind of have a metric to measure of where we are. And I think that would be good to see that we can have metrics to measure the different pieces of the value drivers. So we can see how far are we away or how close are we to reaching the, that specific value driver or that goal? Including dealing with the water accessibility and affordability. I know that's a, a whole elephant of its own. But also seeing what part we continue to play in that because it does impact our housing, which impacts our homelessness and which impacts our city. So all of it is connected. So I really want to be able to see how we can be able to measure and to see how we can be able to have a plan to go forward towards it. Also dealing with traffic, yes, that, that's something I think is great that what we're doing. I think the traffic congestion mitigation program that they had mentioned earlier. I'd like to see how, and I know how that's continuing to be implemented and what the data looks like. So like if we look at data and, and compare it to last year, to this year, is it, is it working? Or what other steps can we do to move forward to have it to be even better? And I think the adaptive, you know, light component is great and definitely on lighthouse, I see that as I go back and forth to work every day. But I'd like to see the data on that to see how it's actually impacting. It's great to say, yeah, it's working where it's moving the flow through, but I'd like to see as far as like, what is it? Is it actually mitigating accidents? How does that look? Because that's part of safety. And so I'd like to see those things and being able to assess how that moves forward as well as as far as transparency, I'd like to see what type of processes look like, what the processes look like when you're talking about, and that's why I was asking about the online permitting tool and some of the other pieces that you were saying that you have or that you're getting ready to, to implement processes for everything and anything. When you talk about transparency and transparent and more inclusive governance. If you have, I mean, when a person goes to pull a permit, whether it be for their house or whether it be for an addition or whether it be for whatever, especially when it's connecting to housing, how does that look? What is the process? Are we making it transparent and easy to go through as far as knowing the steps? I'm not saying, oh yeah, you can just do whatever. But I'm saying to know what the steps are so it doesn't become a, a hidden agenda or hidden curriculum. Not saying that it is, but a lot of times people just don't know what they don't know. So my thing is that we're making it easier for them or how did the process look? Even, you know, if you're looking at not only the planning and housing, but even if you look at even from our police department, you know, what's the process of, of what a person goes through? If, if they are picked up, do they know their rights? Suppose it's somebody who's never been in trouble before. How does that look? Do, do they, are they informed of all the different things? Are their families informed of what that looks like, what the process is? And transparency, being able to make sure that everybody is aware of what things look like and what the processes are. So it's not anything that they have to dig a lot or, or look around or ask a lot of questions or go through three or four different people to find out what the process is to be able to get to their goals. So those are some of the things that I'd like to see going forward in 2023, if you will, my goals or resolutions for 2023. And at this point, I think that would be it. Mainly those pieces which all kind of come together with the housing, the rental registry, the water access and affordability, the transparency with the processes, looking at the processes more inclusively and then looking into the traffic congestion mitigation program and seeing what the data looks like and comparatively speaking from the different years to see how we're making progress. And I think at this point that would be it, but I just want to make sure that the staff actually knows that I do appreciate everything that you do and what you've done even before I got here. I, I've seen the staff working in, in an awesome and effective way and I appreciate what, how you continue to move forward. Thank you.
Very perfect. So I'd like to thank my, my colleagues, thank the staff and, and the public for all the input. I'm just going to jump right into it for sake of time. I have kind of maybe four main categories that I, I identify. One is cannabis. Housing homelessness is another one. Transparency and civic engagement is the third and governance is the fourth. So starting off with the cannabis piece, we have moved forward with looking at retail. I think I, I agree with, with Alan's comments, the sooner that we can move forward with this, the better. This is a revenue stream for us. And so it, it would be great to get this over the finish line. I think that we will be moving forward. It's just to what extent? And I think we just need to allow this to, to get in front of the council so that we can make a determination on that. And, and speaking of the revenue piece, you know, we'll talk more about this, I imagine, but you know, we know that the emergency rental assistance program worked very well. So are there opportunities to create a long-term program within the city of Monterey? So that we can protect people and does it necess, I don't think it even necessarily needs to be focused on renters. Can we have a how, emergency housing assistance program, thinking of seniors on fixed incomes? If there's people in a time of need that we can provide them assistance in their housing, I think that's a great thing. Can we look at potentially creating a, a fund for affordable housing development? So these are just some of the things I, I think about there. In addition to the retail piece, I know that there's this other conversation that we can and should have around events. And I know I've talked to staff, I know that there's a difference between events on city owned land versus state owned land versus private property. And I know that that's all work in and of itself. It's a space where we do look to use a consultant to help kind of expedite that process because I think that there's a great opportunity in revenue coming in from that space as well beyond just the retail. I, I know that there was not a lot of support for this, but I, I wonder if we can open up the dialogue again around the idea of putting one of the options on North Fremont. I'm not sure how, how you feel that about, about that Councilman Garcia, but I, I, I think that could provide, provide a great opportunity. One of the points that I had made when we had talked about this before is we could be capturing a clientele that may be going to seaside because it's closer and easier to go over to seaside as opposed to driving to this side of Monterey. So I, I, I'd like just to engage in that conversation again to look at what those opportunities are. So that's cannabis, housing and homelessness. This is, I think this can and should be our bread and butter for the city over the next two years. And so there's a lot of elements here. And, and what I would say, and Hans, you and I have talked about this offline, but you know, could we bring some of these back and just have a discussion where the council looks at all these policies in totality? And we talk about where are the priorities? Which ones do we want to tackle? And I would even offer maybe breaking some of this up a little bit, maybe in two or three buckets. One being supply, another one being renter policies and another one being homelessness. So just diving into the supply side. Like you said, Alan, re-engaging on some of those other opportunity sites that we, I talked about. What are those opportunities with the E and A with the Adam Street project? I think a big thing, and I think about this when we talk about the revitalization of North Fremont. What are, how can we be creative in finding solutions to help developers get their projects across the finish line? I can't remember where this idea came from. It might've been you, Hans, but could we create an, an emergency ordinance where we, we allow a process, the process to be expedited to help streamline this while we're kind of going through this crisis of trying to get housing developed. If we can create that affordable housing fund, that might be an opportunity. But how can we think creatively about it? And, and I'm, I'm thinking of twenty two hundred North Fremont, that project is approved, the developer can move forward with it, but it's not penciling out now. So what are we doing to loop back around with the developer and say, hey, what can we do to help you get this going again? The housing element is key, key, key this year. It's due in December. The state has to review it and approve it. And I think that this is a great opportunity. So I'm, I would hope that the council can get a presentation sooner rather than later on the current status in the way ahead. I know that there was discussion around a joint session with the planning commission. So maybe that might be a good opportunity to do that. A big piece of the housing element should be public participation. And I know that there's elements already built into that process that we've, that the staff has planned for. But how can we make that more robust? How can we be more intentional around reaching out to stakeholders within the community that we probably wouldn't normally hear from, knowing that our community is sixty six percent renters? How many of those folks that we're hearing from are renters versus, versus homeowners? And this isn't to say we need to listen to renters over homeowners, but it's bringing everybody to the table and making sure that we're getting that true voice and perspective from the community. And so some of the outreach opportunities to key stakeholders, reaching out to our business partners, the business community and seeing if they can help promote opportunities with their workforce. It would even be great incentive. Particularly in the hospitality industry, housing is so important for their workforce. So could they allow, you know, some paid time to have some sessions where they're interacting with city staff and providing their public input? I'm also thinking, I'm reaching out to childcare centers and school, just in the school districts. How, how are we connecting with these? And, and I think we just need to think beyond that. What are the, who are those different stakeholders that we need to reach so that we're pulling information as opposed to just pushing it and waiting to see who comes to us? I, I think have your say Monterey is a great tool. I just wonder how many people kind of everyday commoners that maybe aren't paying attention to what's going on on a daily basis. How many folks are, are aware of those things? So opportunity with the housing element. Can we take another look at our ADU policy? I know that it, it might need updates with new state policy. And so I know that might be coming back around, but I think that's a priority. And then this segue is really great into water. I, I put it under the supply side of the conversation. Because, you know, we're talking about construction and we can't do a lot if we have these restrictions around the water supply. And so one I, one thing I hope that we can do is I think we need to be consistent as a city in regards to our messaging around water and that should drive efforts moving forward there. So I'm hoping that we can put a resolution together expressing our opposition with so much focus on CalM's DSAW project and taking measures to support the expansion of Monterey One Waters Pure Water Monterey Expansion Project. So this isn't to say that CalM's DSAW project shouldn't happen, even though I might have my own personal feelings about that. But we need to, I've been hearing a lot of people talk about how all of a sudden they support the expansion project. We need all hands on deck, all stakeholders writing letters to the CPUC. This is the only way that we're going to get water the fastest. It's going to be the most environmentally project. It's going to be the most cost efficient project. We need to get all hands on deck because this is going to be the key for us moving forward with housing construction. So if we can write a letter to the CPUC, I think that would be a great first step in regards to that conversation. And, and the, and the goal there is to encourage CalM or, or require CalM to move forward with signing the water purchase agreement. Alan, you had brought up earlier about the, working with M one W and potentially creating some water projects. I know that we have the grant funding for the water waterfront parking lot. And there was this way of taking water, you know, the infrastructure being really easy to take the water from Lake Alastero and putting that in the. um Lake Alastero and putting that in the um into the system for Monterey One Water. I think the challenge is, is that when there's storms, when when they're in the rainy season, the Pure Water Monterey Project, the the project can't take in any more water. So then it's like, where do we store this water? And another part of that conversation is P G, they had purchased their own water. I don't think it's actually turning out to be as successful as they hoped in regard in regards to the cost uh associated with them managing that, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be finding these opportunities um to um support that. And so you're right, the key to this entire conversation um is storage. How do we allow that water to be stored so that the it's the Pure Water Monterey System can be um performing at its optimum throughout the entire year, including the dry season? I think there's opportunity to work with Monterey One Water to establish a payment assistance program. They had established that um for our wastewater treatment um bill. But there's two parts of that bill that I I don't think most people are aware of. There's there's a city portion, our city charges residents a a portion of their stormwater, which is our city-owned ownership of the storm system and or the waste system. And then uh Monterey One Waters portion. And so Monterey One Water did establish a program. I think it's relatively, it would be relatively inexpensive um for us to partner with Monterey One Water. And I think we can really have leadership in setting the example for what other jurisdictions can do to help folks that are struggling, um you know, on a one-time basis with some um utility assistance. So I think there's opportunities there for us to lead the way. I think we need to be working with the Water Management District so that once we do, I'm assuming we're gonna be successful in getting the expansion online, I was gonna say that today. Um and when we do so, when we do get water online, how are we working with the Water Management District now? And I I'm not sure if the Policy Advisory Committee, I don't know which committee on the Water Management District could be right to work this. But how are we having that conversation rep now around prioritizing um water credits uh once there, once we get that additional reserve? Revenue options, um there were some conversations that have been had with the public around some potential revenue options in regards to housing policy. So property transfer tax, vacancy tax, what do those opportunities look like in the city of Monterey? Okay, I'm gonna switch to renter policies. Um I'm just gonna list some stuff and uh not in priority order or necessarily saying we have to have it, but just, do you know, I think this kind of connects with your point. Let's have this larger conversation around where the options are. These are just things that I've heard of over the last four years. So a rental registry, I think we can definitely bring that back and look at where the opportunities are there for the city to be uh prepared with more data so that we can make decisions in regards to our renter population. Um look at filling in the gaps from the state's implementation of A B fourteen eighty-two. Councilmember Albert spoke about that when we had this discussion over the last council. Um and so how can we pick that conversation back up and look at where opportunities are there? Um a rent board, uh legal assistance, one-time application fee. Uh and and what I mean there is when a renter is looking for a unit on the market as opposed to paying four or five application fees every time they find a different unit. Is there a way that we can work um in collaboration with property management companies and landlords? So that there's one application fee that they can use to apply and maybe that lasts for three or four months or something while they're in the process of searching for a unit. Um long-term, uh uh like I said earlier, a long-term emergency housing assistance program. Okay, and and then homelessness. I mean, we have all received messages already uh from this council, from business, um from folks in the business community that are being affected um by those uh on El Dorado Street and just in the business districts. Um there was one individual who had her window smashed in. Um and, you know, we're we're limited and I and I think it's helpful for the community to be educated on that. But we need to do something about it. And this isn't just our business community. This isn't just our residents. Uh we've heard of people having homeless individuals going through their backyard in and out of kind of greens, green spaces um i- in the city. Um this is also eating up our resources with our our police and fire having to respond to these situations, which I appreciate the police department being so proactive and finding solutions so that we can fill the gap. Um but how can we take that pressure off of our police department and our fire department for having to respond to these things by addressing these issues? And it it's affecting these homeless individuals themselves, which is like the hu- the huge human part of all this is, these are most of these people, um a- at least from the data that I've seen, are people that are from this area. These are local folks, you probably don't see most of them. Um you know, we we're talking about those that might loiter in public spaces, but most of them are unseen. So there's a huge conversation around how to have around this whole conver- uh whole topic. And uh and I think we can have some leadership in addressing it. And I'm not saying it's gonna be easy, this is gonna be a tough one. Um but we need to do the work uh uh to to do it. So uh just a few thoughts here. We need to work in regional collaboration, this is gonna take a lot of uh stakeholders. You know, a lot of municipalities across the country have implemented a housing-first model. What does that look like um in collaboration with our regional partners? There's also this program called Functional Zero. And what that is, is it is it's milestones which uh must be sustained that indicate a community has measurably solved homelessness for a population. And then when it's achieved, homelessness is rare and brief for that population. So there's a couple of elements associated with that. But I think that there's space for us to talk about it. And the idea essentially there is that you're never really completely eliminating homelessness. But when it, when it comes up, you address it right away. So how can we kind of uh establish a a model that works for us here? Jumping to transparency and civic engagement. This is maybe a small one, but might take some lift from staff. One of the challenges that I found um for us in transitioning when Councilmember um uh Albert and I were both running for mayor. Um it became clear that once Election Day happened that the council could either appoint somebody to fill our vacant seats or leave them vacant. And it's just a weird thing, I think, in the city code that I'm hoping that we can have updated. If I'm not necessarily saying change the policy in regards to if you're on the council and you're running for mayor and it's from a safe seat, that you should lose your seat, I'm not saying that, but the the people that are running for mayor on the council should be able to serve out the rest of their term until the new council is sworn in. So it's just so a small little tweak that I think can make things a little more efficient there.
But I wanna make sure I understand you, but then that means there's, there is safe seats.
Well, they would still lose their seat once the new count, once the new council got sworn in. So one seat would end up vacant, but for example, even though I was
About the interim time.
That's correct.
Okay.
Even though I was elected, I had to vacate my seat for a month until I got sworn in again. That's a little bit silly, I think.
It's, it is in the charter, it would need a vote of the people, but we can um look at this before the next ballot cycle.
Perfect.
That maybe some other things you might be interested in tweaking in the charter.
Yeah. Say again?
Chart we are at it.
Yeah, yeah, while we're at, yeah, yeah, all in one swoop.
Charter updates.
Yeah, um yeah, so I just wanted to touch on the ADA Transition Plan Update. I I wanna reinforce that message, I can't remember who said it earlier, that that's gonna be, there's gonna be two sessions tomorrow, I think. One in the chamber here um tomorrow morning and then one via Zoom um tomorrow evening. So that's a great opportunity. And I would just throw out, because I just did interviews for vacant vacancies on our boards, commissions and committees, that we don't have anybody serving in two of our vacant seats on the Disabled Access Appeals Board. So I just encourage folks that if they're wanting to find a way of getting more involved, we definitely need folks to be serving on that board. I'd love to fill all the vacancies. So COVID, so I I I think staff has been leading the way and I appreciate the efforts in in regards to particularly public meetings. And I appreciate everybody in here today wearing masks. I did notice at our our last meeting that there were a few folks not wearing masks and I don't want this something that staff has to take care of. I think it's a policy decision for the council. And so I'm hoping that we can have a discussion item at some point where we look at what that transition looks like. And so I know that the governor's order is ending in February. Um do we wanna continue a masking policy? Do we wanna say when levels get to a certain level that we require? You know, what does that look like? And I think that the council can have a a discussion in regards to what that looks like and then enforce it. If people are in here without a mask and we requiring it, then folks shouldn't be allowed in the chamber. So I think just kind of having a clear policy there would be helpful. All right, my last topic is governance. Um so I'm just gonna kind of try to run through these as quickly as possible. And this might just be a strategic planning discussion that the council has just about how we're gonna operate moving forward. So um letterhead, letter writing, you know, there are things that I sign as mayor that don't necessarily come in front of the council. Do we wanna be clear about what the boundaries are in regards to that? What about the rest of the council? Should you all have letterhead that you can use to make your messaging to community more official? Um so I think having a conversation around that might be helpful. Um getting things on the agenda, I won't go through that process today, but particularly for our new council members. Do we wanna continue that process that we've been using or do we wanna re-establish a new one? Again, strategic planning, council retreat, how frequently do we wanna check in with each other?
Recording in progress.
With all that missed. Um so how frequently do we wanna check in? Maybe, and maybe um twice a year? Uh maybe mid-year, we, you know, kind of see how are we doing? And then at the beginning of every year, we kind of so I think we just have to kind of come to to some kind of agreement on that. One of the things that we talked about was um updating ha- or having a process for how we're going to appoint to board, to boards, commissions and committees. Do we wanna do something now that we're transitioning to districts? Do we wanna do something like prioritizing uh folks that are applying from uh districts that are not represented? Uh kind of trying to create equity there. What does that look like? And I think just having a conversation around that. Yeah, absolutely.
We combine that with the governance, because I think
This is all under governance.
Under governance.
Yep.
Okay, just wanna make sure I was hearing that.
Yep. Friday folders and then this is maybe just this, an opportunity to share with the entire council that um, you know, Hans shares with us. Uh Friday folders that we get, some of these things I feel like perhaps could be shared publicly. But there are things that um are maybe are important for the council. And so I think just kind of us communicating to Hans what is important for us to hear and having that conversation, I think would be helpful and giving Hans some direction regards to what our needs are. And this isn't any, um this isn't anything against Hans, I think he's doing a wonderful job. I actually really appreciate the Friday folders. And in fact, when I was representing the city on a couple of the of the business districts, I would use the Friday folders from that previous month to determine what kind of feedback that I would be giving to um the business districts. And it became very useful. Um so just a a little nugget for for particularly for the new council members. Um I think we need to have a conversation around a a process for the city manager and city attorney performance evaluations. Um and I'm, yeah, I think that there's just a a process thing there. You guys are doing great. No, I think personally against you all, I think we just need to have a a clear process, I think would be helpful. There's this other thing about uh the staff intensity of review of council um policies. So I think that the 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 pathway that staff has been taking is look at everything with the fine tooth uh tooth comb and make sure that it's really ready to go and it's very sound. And I think that's great for maybe a lot of the things that we're looking at, but I don't think we need that level for everything. And I think if we're trying to balance staff workload with what the council is bringing forward, um is there a way, like if we had a policy that we were copying from another jurisdiction, maybe do a quick review, but not to have to do a full intense thing where we're eating up a lot of staff time. So how can we kind of give some direction to staff in regards to kind of tiering that? Um and then the last thing uh I'll I'll bring up is um the budget. I know that every year we have a mid-year budget review. In my mind, mid-year budget review is mid-year of the of the budget cycle. So technically, in my mind, that should be in January. And and we've never done that. So I I wonder what that process looks like. My concern has been with the budget that we we all, we're waiting so close to the end of the year. And I know part of it is having a better picture of where our revenues will be um and and the projections will be. But I think having that conversation earlier on will allow for more robust and transparent process in regards to our budget. I think looking at revenues versus expenditures, I talked about a few revenue options with cannabis or with the with the vacancy tech, you know, there's a couple of options there, but we also should be looking at expenditures. Where are there opportunities for us to um, you know, clean things up a little bit and make things happen a little bit more efficiently and save cost? And then we have major infrastructure that I think needs to be a really key priority for the council. So we have the police and fire station that we've talked about needing upgrades. Um the library, the sports center, the conference center, the Wharf, Wharf Two was on the slide earlier. And I know that there needs to be a lot of work there. Um speaking of the sports center, we we are supposed to be at seventy-five percent of cost recovery. So we do have the operational analysis that will be coming back. Um pension liability will be coming back in March, so I'm glad to hear that. Reserves, rainy day fund, vehicle purchase savings, making sure that we're setting enough funding aside. And then uh public banking. Um I know that we've talked about that. Um I know that the group that's been leading the effort there has been focused on moving forward with the feasibility study. And so I think if we can just um commit to um giving our support as far as the funding towards making that happen, we can have the data to help make a decision on whether or not that's something that we wanna move forward with. And I know that's something rela- relatively insignificant. So if we can um push forward our commitment to that, I think it could help move that forward.
Mayor, I wanna just uh just say that although we didn't, we did not take a vote for that. Uh many of the things that you're going through, I think, uh need to be agendized and come before the full council and will require votes. Um and to say things may be relatively insignificant with public banking is a understatement and needs to be carefully weighed with the agenda process and the full council consideration and full council vote.
Absolutely. Yep. So nothing I said was going to be without the full vote of the council. And my point wasn't to say that implementing public banking isn't insignificant. I think what's, what my point was is the cost to us contributing towards doing a viability study is relatively insignificant. It's a couple of thousand dollars. In the grand scheme of things, that's not much and that will supply us the data um and information that we can use to make a decision in regards to what that looks like moving forward. But I think it will absolutely come in front of the council before we move forward with anything.
Yes, and it's gonna be required to do that because many of the things that you're you're talking about, I know these are, you're setting your priorities and this is your time as well. But um I wanna remind the council that the form of government we have is that all staff is supervised and the work plan is directed by the city manager. So we have to be careful when we start talking about policies that or guidelines that we are sort of structuring that we want staff to do. It's in the context of working through the city manager
Absolutely.
And making sure that those things are staffed and that we do bring agendas so that we hear the testimony from our city manager and others so that we can weigh and consider before we just quickly make decisions.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there was something that I said that made you feel like I was trying to circumvent the process. Because the same thing could be said for any of the, any of the rest of the council, right? You all brought up some specific policies, all that will have to come in front of the council. So I'm not sure if there's something that I said that made that led you to believe that I was trying to give staff direction without having it come to the council.
No, and I didn't, I'm not saying that I thought that you were circumventing, but it's a good time when we were talking about governance and you're and you're going through a a large number of priorities that are your priorities that may not be our priorities. And so we have to kind of put this in some category because we're hearing it and we're not seeing it. And there's no list that none of us have performed or or put forward first. There's a lot there, but there was a lot that I heard that borders on whether or not it's us establishing policy or whether we are staying within the confines of what our charter says. So that's, that's all I'm saying.
Sure.
Is that each one of these things, that if it touches the charter, then we need to find out what the charter says, we need to act on it. And if it's charter We need to act on it. And if it's charter, it's a vote of the people.
Absolutely. Well, for sake of time, I'm going to wrap us up. Hans, do you have any last minute thoughts, comments?
No, thank you so much. That was very positive feedback for us. We, we took all copious notes and. Well, I hope also that on a, during your one-on-ones, you as council members. Tell me where you see the next steps. I, I take the task also to. Report back to help the council with the housing issues. Clearly a majority of the council wants to, to strategize there. And, and I'll, we will come back as a staff there to do all that. And, and thank you so much. We'll, we'll figure it, we will figure it all out and, and. I haven't heard a lot of reduction in programs though, you know, but, but. You, you, you added a, you like to have a housing fund added, an emergency rental assistance and let's spend the cannabis money. Which is all good and fine, but my job will be also to provide opportunities for you. To tell the community also, these are things we cannot fund and, and. Do we need for active operated neighborhood centers? Or do you want to have an emergency rental assistance program or a housing fund? These were, these will be the real choices at one time. That you have to make. So again, the feedback was awesome, was really good. And that was really a cheap city manager shot to say, and didn't hear anything what you want to reduce because that's what is in the book for city managers to say. After sessions like that. So anyways, thank you so much for that. It was very helpful.
Absolutely. And, and customer Smith and, and, and everybody, I mean, I think the, the idea here is this is just the beginning of a conversation. There's, there is a lot. I, I think one of the things that this council is, I feel confident that we're going to do is getting, getting a lot of work done. So I, I'm excited for that and, and hopefully we can muster up the, the work to, to move forward with that. And so I'm, I'm excited to see what we can achieve over the next two years. And with that, we're going to go to public comment for closed session. I'm following my instructions. So closed session is litigation update on the golf case. So anybody in the public wish to make comments on the closed session agenda item? In the chambers? Nope. Do we have anybody online?
I see one hand raised. I'm not sure that person, it's been raised for a little while. I'm not sure that person intends to speak on. Close session, but I can call on her and we can find out. I'll call on Tammy Jennings.
No, I'm sorry. It doesn't show that my hand is up, but since I have the floor, congratulations. Well done, staff. Well done, everybody. And I am proud to be a citizen of Monterey. Doing great. Thank you. Bye.
Thanks, Tammy.
All right. And I do not see any other further hands raised.
All right, awesome. All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.